Good evening. I'm Deb Brinkman, member of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park. I'm your moderator tonight for the Hennepin County Board Six Candidate Forum. I'd like to welcome all of you tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, and LWV Edina. The League of Women Voters, a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and works to increase understanding of major political policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Representatives for the League of Women Voters will be available in the lobby after this forum to meet with candidates and the audience. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It's our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as these to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues face-to-face that are important to you. In screening questions, we have made a good faith effort to include questions on topics that are of general interest. Where necessary, we have rewritten questions to make them applicable to all candidates. Forward-looking and not personal in nature, and we'll make sure that those questions are relevant to this forum. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. This event is now being broadcast live on community cable TV and will be rebroadcast repeatedly in its entirety. It will also be available by streaming video at the city website and www.lwveme.org. Individual recordings and photography that does not disrupt this event is allowed. Tonight's questions have been submitted online and also been submitted by our live audience. Cards become the property of the League of Women Voters. If the answer was unclear to you, feel free to submit a follow-up question or to ask the candidate after the forum. I will now introduce the candidates for Hennepin County Board District Six elections. Heather Edelson, Patrick Gage, Janet Kitui, Daniel Moret, Marissa Simonetti, and Jen Westmoreland. Thank you to the candidates as well as the audience for coming tonight. We'll begin with two-minute opening remarks. Following that, the candidates will have one and a half minute time to respond to questions that have been submitted. Response order will be randomized. Our candidate forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. So we'll begin with opening remarks. And first, again, it's a two-minute opening remark. We'll start with Heather Edelson. And before we get started, we'll start one direction for opening and then we'll reverse direction for closing comments. Okay, so the first is Heather Edelson. Your opening remark, please.
Good evening. My name's Heather Edelson. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and express my appreciation for all of you being here tonight. I am running for Hennepin County Commissioner because right now, at this moment, we must elect a balanced, experienced leader. The District Six seat has been open for eight months, so it is important to elect someone who can have impact on day one. I believe I am uniquely positioned to achieve this through my personal experience, professional background, and my proven ability to bring people together. As a child, I grew up to a single mom. We struggled to pay rent, afford groceries, and access health care. When you grow up to a single parent, you're always a team. I did not have a big family, and Hennepin County helped us in so many ways, from child support to rental assistance. I do not know what we would have done without Hennepin County. As important as this lived experience is my professional background. I have represented Edina in the Minnesota House of Representatives for six years. I was first elected in 2018 and have had the honor to serve during some of our state's most challenging times, including the pandemic and civil unrest. I have worked hard to be a pragmatic voice, leading the Civility Caucus that brings Democrats and Republicans together to tackle policy in a bipartisan way. I was elected Assistant Majority Leader and currently serve as the Vice Chair of Ways and Means. I also have served on the Public Safety Committee, Education, Health and Human Services, and Environmental Committees. Prior to being elected, I worked as a mental health therapist and served on several boards and commissions, including the Edina Crime Prevention Fund where we supported the work of first responders. As a commissioner, I will build on this experience by continuing to build our mental health support systems, prioritizing services for people with disabilities, and working to address climate change, ensuring roads are maintained and support for multimodal transportation, and make our communities safe. I am committed to this work. It is my honor to be in this race, and I look forward to the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Heather. Patrick Gage.
I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, my fellow candidates, and everybody watching here and online. Local elections are the lifeblood of democracy, and your participation strengthens our community. My name is Patrick Gage, and I'm running for Hennepin County Commissioner in District Six. This is my home. My family has lived here for 75 years, from Shorewood and Mound to Hopkins and Tonka Bay. I can point to almost every city on our map and talk about what it means to me. After graduating from Georgetown and working for several nonprofits and campaigns, including time as a political advisor to Governor Walz, I moved home and bought my first house in District Six. There's nowhere else I'd rather represent on the county board. I'm running because I believe we can build a safer, healthier Hennepin County together. We're facing real challenges. Climate change has never been more apparent, and we have a long way to go, from implementing alternate waste solutions to shutting down the Herc Garbage Incinerator. We're also failing nurses and frontline workers. While they save lives, Hennepin Health Care cuts their benefits. That's unacceptable. And many people in our community still feel unsafe. It's important that we ensure the county sheriff's office is fully funded and well-staffed and that we deliver justice to the victims of crimes and their families. We deserve a county commissioner who will address these challenges head-on and fight for what's right. My team and I have knocked on almost 20,000 doors so far because that's what politics is all about: putting in the hard work to meet each other and listen to what we care about. That's the kind of commissioner I'll be for all of us. Thank you, and I look forward to this forum.
Thank you, Patrick. Janet Kitui.
Thank you, the League of Women Voters, and thank you for all the attendees here. Thank you to my fellow candidates. My name is Janet Kitui. I'm running for Hennepin County District Six Commissioner. I am originally from Kenya. I have lived in Edina 13 years. I have served as President of Parent Council at Southview Middle School. I have also served as Commissioner on the Transportation Commissioner in Edina. I have served on the Edina Housing Task Force. I also have served on the Climate Action Plan in Edina. Based on my background and the issues I care about is why I'm here to ask for your vote today. I am the Black Female Senator Paul Wellstone. I am running because politics is about the improvement of people's lives. It's about advancing the cause for peace and justice in our country and the world. Politics is about doing well for the people of Hennepin County District Six. To me, what is important about politics is to be sincere and to speak directly to the issues. I do not want to sell my soul to big special-interest political action committees. As I have been talking to the voters on the doors, this is what I have heard them say: People are concerned about affordable housing, support for small businesses, access to mental health, public safety for all, environmental and climate justice. Delivering on these priorities is at the heart of why I run. I would be honored to earn your vote on April 30th and May 14th. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Daniel Moret.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Moret. It's a privilege to be here with you all. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates, all of the attendees and viewers online. What I want to talk about tonight is, first and foremost, I want to express my condolences and send my thoughts to the deputy who was shot this afternoon not a few blocks from here. It's a tragedy that really comes to the heart of what we want to talk about today: the opportunities and challenges that our community has and is facing. And I just want to make sure that we have that at the forefront of our thoughts today in our time together. I have a background in community impact. I've worked for nonprofits for most of my career. I'm happily married. I live in Edina with our three small children. I have three daughters, five, four, and one years old. It is exciting for them to see their dad on TV right now, and they're the reason why I'm running. I want to build a better future for my children, for all of our children, and for our community. The issues that get me out of bed in the morning and that I'm talking about when I'm speaking to voters in forums like these and on the doors are economic opportunity, climate investment, youth opportunity, and finally, public safety. And my view on all of these issues is that if we are going to provide living wage jobs for all of our community members so they can provide economic security for their families, if we are going to tackle the climate crisis through strategic and important investments in green technologies, and ultimately providing a hand up and opportunity for our next generation, those are the three things that are going to help us solve our public safety crisis that we are living through today. And we are living through 30 years of disinvestment in our communities and public spaces, and I think we need to reverse that trend. Because the era of big government is over, the era of small government failed, and the era of smart government is here, and that's what we need to be investing in. And I'm really excited to talk to you all tonight about my ideas. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Dan. Marissa Simonetti.
Thank you all for having me here. I'm having a wonderful time connecting with you all and getting to hear some of the issues that matter to you. My name's Marissa Simonetti. I am running for County Commissioner here in District Six, and I'm probably going to be a little bit of a different flavor than anyone else here tonight. I am a small business owner, and I graduate with my degree in psychology in about four more weeks. I'm here because underneath all the issues, I believe we all essentially want the same thing: safety, security, and a bright future for ourselves and our children. I'm a single mother to my son, who is here with us tonight, and Minnesota has been our home since 2013. We love our beautiful summers, sending the kids out to play, and knowing that they are safe to ride their bikes in the neighborhood. We're absolutely thankful for our sense of neighborly community, that no matter whose backyard the kids are in, we know that they're taken care of as if they are their own. My son's name is Malik, and his grandparents legally emigrated here from Egypt 30 years ago, and I believe they're the story of the possibility of the American dream. Malik's grandpa rode a bicycle to work to wash dishes in the winter. Malik's grandma did elder home care, and together they saved up enough money to be able to buy their very first business. They went from nothing to something. That's their story, and it's also my story. I'm committed to hope for a brighter future and keeping the American dream alive.
Thank you, Marissa. And Jen Westmoreland.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jen Westmoreland, and it is a pleasure to be in community with all of you tonight, so many people who care so deeply about the future of District Six, including my fellow candidates. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and I am so thrilled to be running to be your next commissioner for District Six. I have spent my life in District Six. I grew up in Hopkins and Minnetonka. I lived in Mound, and I currently live in the Hopkins School District portion of Edina. I've served on the Hopkins School Board for the past seven years. I served as Chair through the COVID pandemic. And during my time on the school board, I've approached that role in a very expansive way: partnering with local elected officials in our community and with leaders and staff at the county level. And for the past six months that our district has been unrepresented, I've been serving as a bridge person between local elected officials, between community members here in District Six and Hennepin County, working closely on housing issues and youth issues that impact all of us here in District Six. And I'm looking forward to formalizing that role, hopefully, within the next month here. Tonight, in response to the questions, you are going to be hearing answers that are reflected on my website and on my platform. When I started this campaign in September, I started engaging in a series of conversations with community members across District Six. So what you will hear tonight is our collective vision for the future of our community, and I am so happy to share it with you.
Thank you, Jen. And we'll start our questions, and they will be one and a half minutes each. Again, the order's going to be random, so you'll have to pay attention here. The first question, we'll start with Jen, and then followed by Dan. The first question is, how would you summarize the main duties and responsibilities of the county commissioner job?
Thank you for the great question. So county commissioners oversee a budget of between $2 and $3 billion per year, and there are a variety of lines of business that fall under the county purview. So those include environmental services, social services, the Hennepin Health Care System, housing, transportation, and community safety. There are so many wonderful things happening in the county right now, and I'm looking to really support and advance some of the innovative programs, such as the newly-launched Elevate Hennepin Program to support small business owners, and also bring my experience and my scholarly work on systems change and systems design to the county to ensure that we are reducing duplicative efforts in the county and really using taxpayer dollars wisely.
Thank you, Jen. And Dan.
Like Jen said, thank you for the question. It's great to hear from our community members directly tonight. For me, I think a public official's responsibility first and foremost is to be wise stewards of public resources and make strategic and effective investments so that we can help all of our community members flourish and thrive. I think that is done through rigorous conversation and make sure that all stakeholders are represented when decisions are made. One of the things that we talk about a lot in my work is how you can build a bigger table and have more seats and be able to bring more people to the conversation and call in people who have often been left out of conversations, and make sure that we are hearing from every level of investment, every stakeholder, and provide the opportunity for people to give us feedback on our priorities and make sure they are clearly communicating their own. So listening, engaging, and providing clear and direct action to help solve community challenges would be the way I would want to approach the job and what I think is most important for a public official in office. And then, to be frank, I think the other thing that needs to happen is innovation and creativity. I think what we need to have happen from our public sector leaders is to think differently, to think bigger, and to think about investments in long-term futures, because we are living through this 30-year period of disinvestment, and we need to make sure the next 30-year period is one of thriving opportunity for all of our community members.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. And then we'll go next to Marissa. Would you like me to repeat? Got it?
Would you kindly?
Yes, I'd be glad to. How would you summarize the main duties and responsibilities of the county commissioner job?
So the other evening, I took the time to look into the approved 2024 budget to really understand what is going on and the sort of oversight or the responsibilities and the different avenues that money goes to as part of the county commissioner job. My background is in business. I own rental property, and as part of that, what your job is to do is to provide the most possible value that you possibly can in the most efficient way. And I believe that this job is primarily a financial job. There are some political opportunities involved. For example, there's political organizations that need resources, and they absolutely should be funded when they add value to the community. One thing that I really enjoy with the community that is under the purview of the county commissioner and is funded is the library. My son and I love going to the library. We're there all the time, and it's one of the really good valuable resources. I've also had the really good opportunity to meet with different organizations. For example, the Coalition that is looking to shut down the Herc so that people in North Minneapolis who are struggling are no longer damaged by the pollution. And that's given me a really cool opportunity to see opportunities to build trust with people of excellence and find ways to create situations where everybody's winning.
Thank you, Marissa. And next, we'll go to Heather.
Thank you. So you've heard a lot on this issue, but $2.65 billion is how much the Hennepin County budget is. 60% of that is Health and Human Services. As someone that has worked as a therapist, as someone that works on mental health policy, I just want to flag that we are facing a mental health crisis in our state and across our nation, quite frankly. And when we start looking at what the Hennepin County Board does, it is an investment in our morals. It's making sure we are taking care of people that are at a brink, making sure that we are showing up in ways that are real. And the county board is able to raise your property taxes. You want people that are level, that know what they're doing, but also know where to invest. And people with disabilities, I've worked to make sure that we are improving access at the Capitol. I will continue to do that. I will continue to work on mental health in the intersection of public safety. It's a critical area. The Hennepin County is essentially a microcosm of what we are at the state, and it's one of the largest budgets outside of the state of Minnesota. I think it's an important area to make sure that people know that when we're talking about this job, you have to care about Health and Human Services. It's 60% of the budget.
Thank you, Heather. Janet Kitui.
Thank you. The role of a county commissioner is huge, particularly Hennepin County. They do approve the budget. They do appoint the county administrator who runs the county on behalf of the commission. They do approve the tax and levy in Hennepin County, and they also oversee the employee policies. The county commissioners, seven of them, have a big role, and as Heather has said, Health and Human Services is a huge chunk of what they run. That is part of where they distribute food stamps. That's where they run the medical assistance for those indigenous people who can't afford to get health care through their employer or purchase it on the private market. They also are involved in the incarcerated people, so they are doing enormous work on our behalf. And most of us, unfortunately, we are unaware of keeping track of what they do, but they do a lot that impact us directly. The taxes that even is collected on our behalf and brought back to our schools, they are responsible for that. Our children's education is also dependent on what the commissioners do. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And Patrick Gage, please.
For me, the core of what a county commissioner does is represent their community. The county board has a lot of responsibilities, as you've heard from the other candidates, but I think the most important thing that a county commissioner does is represent all of us. That is why I have personally knocked on 10,000 doors in this community over the last couple of months, not just because I've worked on campaigns before, and I know that's how successful campaigns are run, but because I really believe that that is what politics is all about, right? It is about meeting people at their door and asking them what they're worried about or what they're excited about. If the county board was meant to just focus on, you know, specific services, we might be appointed, and that's a different conversation. So for me, when I get this question, and I get this question on the doors a lot, I talk often about how important it is that we have someone who really represents us, who puts in the work, who shows up, who does that sidewalk pounding work to talk to each and every person from every single part of our community. So for me, that is the core of what the county board does. It represents people, and it brings your priorities into action.
Thank you, Patrick. And Patrick, we'll start with you for this next question. And the question is, what do you feel is the number-one issue that the commission faces, and what would you do to resolve it?
I think the number-one issue that the county board faces right now is public safety. For me, there is no hesitation in that answer. Many people in our community feel unsafe. We have a county sheriff's office that is underfunded and understaffed. We have, you know, people who don't feel safe in their neighborhoods and homes. We have a lack of trust between law enforcement and our community for a variety of reasons. So for me, one of my very top, if not my top, priority as a county commissioner is going to be making sure that our county sheriffs have the resources that they need to do their job. And it's a really important job, right? They're providing investigational support to local police departments. They do water patrol, which is really important, especially on Lake Minnetonka, right? And so for me, that is the top priority, is getting those staffing numbers up, making sure we have enough officers, and making sure at the end of the day that everybody in our community feels safe, both in their homes and their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Patrick. And Heather.
Thank you. You're going to hear it a lot from me tonight, but it's mental health, and it's staffing. It's staffing across the board. Our state is facing huge staffing shortages. If you look at PCAs, nursing homes, our children's mental health is on the brink, and I can't stress the importance of this. Our reimbursement rates in the state of Minnesota, which are directly, we have to take care of that as a county. There are things about the county that federal government and state government say that we have to do. That's a lot of our job. We don't get to actually pick and choose. We have to deliver on these results because it's a mandate to us, and we are struggling to make sure that we can staff it. We need better immigration, and we need it now. It hasn't been revisited since the 1960s, and it is at crisis points right now.
Thank you, Heather. And we'll go next to Jen Westmoreland.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about another crisis that we're facing here in the county, and it's a housing crisis. And this is an issue that intersects with environmental justice. It intersects with racial justice, with safety, with mental health. I serve on the Heading Home Hennepin Executive Committee, so we are a committee that exists by federal mandate because the county receives federal funding for housing. I'm the first school board member to be appointed to this committee, and I represent the priorities of our youth and families and caregivers and educators here in District Six on that committee. What we're working on right now is a coordinated shelter-to-housing system. We have been advocating at the state legislature for funding to build out a shelter system that is focused on harm reduction and support for people so that they can get into permanent housing. I've advocated myself as a school board member at the legislature multiple times for affordable housing. I've stood at this podium right here and advocated to the Minnetonka City Council multiple times. Housing and affordability and accessibility was really what got me into organizing in this community. It's a topic I'm very passionate about, and I will continue to do that work as your next commissioner.
Thank you, Jen. Janet Kitui.
Thank you for that question. Jen has shared the same issue with you. Affordable housing is the number-one issue in our county and as a state as a whole. Ann Mevedy, who runs MHP, which is Minnesota Housing Partnership, just talked about, two weeks ago, released a report saying 50% of the citizens of the state of Minnesota are paying more than their fair share of housing. It's more than 30%, so it's unaffordable, their cost burden. Given the urgency of that and how Given the urgency of that and how we even tackled issues such as public safety, how we reduce our expense on the 60% in Health and Human Services, we have to address housing. It is the basic fundamental human right issue to be able to deal with all the other issues that intersect with us in our community. So we have to have the political will to increase housing so everybody can have a roof over their head. If they have a roof over their head, they can have a place to start from and go to work. Children can have an address where a school bus can pick them up to go to school. Our mental health issues can be addressed in earnest. So I am going to say affordable housing, homeownership is the cornerstone of what our, as a board, as a commissioner, should be tackling with in order to handle everything else that we are dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Dan Morret.
I think the most immediate policy issue that whomever is elected on May 14th will need to tackle will be shutting down the HERC incinerator. I think that is one of the most important environmental and social justice issues that will face the board in the immediate future. And it is an example of the immediate impact that this seat and this board can have on the communities around Hennepin County, particularly the communities around the HERC reactor that are suffering from breathing in all of the garbage that our community is sending to that facility. That community has six times the rate of the national average of respiratory and asthma issues. They are breathing in the batteries that are burning. They are breathing in the plastic that is burning. And then we take that toxic ash and we send it to a landfill where it leaches into the water supply for all of our other community members to suffer from. We need to get rid of that facility and we need to do it soon, but we need to do it responsibly. And I think a two-year window to get rid of the HERC reactor is more than enough for our staff at the county level to react and plan for the idea that we need to find other ways to move that garbage and that waste. But we cannot continue to pollute that community and exacerbate the issues that have plagued the communities around HERC. And I think that would be the number one issue that I'd focus on when I was elected.
Thank you, Dan. And Marissa Semenetti.
Thanks. Public safety is also an issue that's really on my heart. One of the issues that prompted me to get into this race was seeing throughout the school year threats of violence to the school. Now, the county commissioner's job is not directly related to the school, but these threats of violence are a sign of a kind of greater trend that's going on within our community. On Easter, I went outside and we were talking with our neighbors and one of them shared that he saw someone's car stolen right in front of him from the grocery store. And another neighbor shared that he knows someone who was assaulted at that same grocery store. And this is in a nice, a nice community. And so for me, that really doesn't bode well. One of the jobs of county commissioner and a huge chunk of the budget is public safety and the justice system. The county commissioner funds the sheriff's office. That's DeWanna Witt. It funds community corrections. It funds district court. And the things that we fund show the things that we assign value to. And while we're talking about public safety, one thing that has also been brought to my attention is a lot of these crimes are children who are being recruited by older people who I would go so far as to call them predators because they see a need in those children's hearts. There's something missing where they're looking for safety and belonging. And they prey on that and enroll them in crime. So that's where I would start, public safety.
Thank you, Marissa. Marissa, we'll start with you with this next question. And the question is, it's a little bit long, so sorry about this, but what skills and experience do you bring to the county commissioner job? And tell us a little bit about your budget experience, budget management experience, and resources that you would be reaching out to in order to be successful with accomplishing some of the duties that you have to perform.
Yeah, so as a small business owner, the most important thing is being optimized. At the end of last year, I looked over my business, my own personal budget, and every single area, not just big categories, but each particular line item. What are the ways that I can optimize this? Either get a better product or service, or is this really necessary? And what I believe in is investing in things, investing wisely in things that provide a return on investment. And return on investment is not just a monetary thing. It's also a return on investment in your safety, in your security, in your quality of life. One thing that I have learned the last six or seven years doing, working for myself, sometimes the hard way, is how to choose trustworthy people of excellence. And they say that business moves at the speed of trust. One thing that I feel when I talk with people is we're suffering from kind of a lack of, there's a lack of trust going on. And I believe once we reestablish trust, which is established through the actions that we take that are in alignment with our words, that's when we can really build and find the win-win scenarios where everybody's needs are met.
Thank you, Marissa. Next, we will go to Janet Katouy.
Thank you. I have lived experience. I have served in the community, whether it was in the Housing Task Force, president of PTO at Southview Middle School. During my day job, I am director of procurement at Normandale Community College. So you bet, I also deal with budget on a day-to-day basis. Not only that, but I do also hold an MBA from Hamline University. So I have both the academic, the experience to be able to run from day one if I am elected to be your commissioner. So on that basis, I am qualified to be your next commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet, and over to Heather.
Thank you. So what skills and experience do I bring and budgetary experience, resources? So, you know, what I would say is, everything that's done at the county is in collaboration with federal and state governments. Quite frankly, a lot of the money is coming from that outside of the property tax base. And so I think making sure that you collaborate well with officials in those areas as well as working and partnering with all of your city. One of the first things I did when I decided to run for this seat is reach out to all the mayors, all the police chiefs, so that they would know who I was. Budgetary experience, I've served on many boards and commissions. I'm currently vice chair on the Ways and Means Committee. We're the ones that set the state budget in the Minnesota House. And I've negotiated deals, sweeping things around education. I was the chief author of the REED Act where we invested $92 million. I've negotiated deals, $100 million of mental health investments in our state. And so I think having that experience is really critical. So I'm thankful for the question.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Jen Westmoreland.
So I've spent the past seven years doing this work as part of the Hopkins School Board. Under my leadership as chair, we undertook the really challenging task of structurally balancing our school district budget. As you know, public schools have been drastically underfunded by our state government and the portion that we get from our federal government for decades. So we have to do this hard work every day of looking at the resources we have, really understanding the programmatic impact of budget decisions, and working closely with community partners. So I have many relationships with nonprofits throughout District Six, with community advocacy groups. I have worked to secure grant funding for our school district around restorative practices and environmental work. I'm an educator. I have taught for the past two decades. I currently am one of Janet's colleagues at Normandale Community College. And as part of my work there, I'm a union member. And so I have close relationships with our labor partners, especially the groups that represent Hennepin County, as well as city and school district leaders across District Six. So I would bring all of that together in my role as commissioner.
Thank you, Jen. We'll go over to Patrick.
I have spent the last 10 years or so working for and supporting a number of nonprofits, primarily around fundraising and budgets. So I have years of experience writing, approving, reviewing multimillion-dollar budgets, watching organizations grow two, three times over a couple of years. I also think I bring a significant amount of organizing and representative experience, which I think, again, is one of the core pieces of this job, which is knowing how to show up, being willing to put in that work. I've organized on three campaigns in the past. Most recently, as statewide field director for the Senate DFL Caucus, when we flipped the Senate to Democrats by 321 votes in a single seat. A lot of that was work that I put in to make sure that our candidates and our program represented the people of each and every senate district we were running in and reflected their priorities back through the campaign. So I think that experience is also incredibly helpful here because I will be the most representative and the most accessible county commissioner that this district could possibly have because it's in my blood. It's what I do, and I'm excited to carry that forward into this role.
Thank you, Patrick, and we'll go over to Dan, Dan Morret.
My experience and background is around working with and working within communities to provide additional economic opportunity for the business owners in those various states and communities. Through the partnerships that I developed throughout and coming out of the COVID pandemic, we deployed more than half a billion dollars in low-interest, simple loans to business owners across the country, including the Minnesota Inclusive Growth Fund right here in the Twin Cities and in Hennepin County. So that is my, where I think that I would have the most functional expertise in policy. Subsequently, I think my expertise and my experience building partnerships and working within and around large bureaucratic, occasionally sclerotic institutions, and finding the centers of influence and authority and working with those folks to get things done, irrespective of if it's in within or outside of that nominal chain of command, is really important. We need to get things done on behalf of the communities that we're serving and finding the ways to do that and making sure that we are delivering on the promises that we are making to our community is really important. I have an MBA from Carlson. I've served on numerous boards and commissions across the community. So I have experience working with budgets and providing oversight and thinking critically about resource allocation. And I think all of those experiences melded together make me a unique candidate for this opportunity and make me a new candidate for the role. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And we'll start with you for this next question. And the question is, please provide your position regarding the dissolution of the Hennepin Health System or HCMC Board as advocated by the Minnesota Nurses Association. Moreover, please provide your perspective on the role of the county commissioner board in the management of Hennepin Healthcare System and HCMC.
So as you heard tonight, the Hennepin Healthcare System is one of the most, if not the most important, part of the role of a commissioner and making sure proper oversight, proper expenditures, and proper investment are happening at our community level. The Hennepin County Healthcare Center, HCMC Downtown, is one of the crown jewels of the healthcare system that is envied around the country. I mean, the healthcare system we have in the Twin Cities is really second to none. But there are still opportunities. And I think the nurses are bringing forth really important and valid criticisms of the board that need to be addressed. I am not for yet taking over that board at the county board level where the commission would stand in for that body. I think we can and should rely on, you know, functional experts in the healthcare space, of which I am not one. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be responsive to the needs of all of the stakeholders that have needed responsibility for the outcomes of community health coming out of the Hennepin Healthcare System, up to and including the providers in the system. So the nurses are raising very important and critical issues, and I think those need to be listened to. But no, I'm not yet for the idea of taking over that at the county board level. And I'm going to forget the second part of the question, but I think it's a really important question and one that the commissioner is going to have to deal with immediately upon taking office.
Thank you. And then next, we'll go over to Marissa.
Thank you. I had the privilege of getting to speak with them during the candidate screening. And the biggest thing that was impressed upon me is our nurses cared for us tirelessly and bravely during COVID. And recently, the administrator gave herself a raise. She makes over a million dollars a year, while saying that there was some sort of financial crisis and cutting their pay, their benefits, the people who are on the ground, taking care of us when we're sick, taking care of us when we need help and support. And that did not sit well with me at all. And I support the nurses. This is a pretty contentious issue, but I believe in the right to, if you feel you're not being treated well or treated as you deserve, I believe you can not work. You just say, okay, somebody else do it. What I see is fundamentally, the nurses provide a lot of emotional labor and society does not value emotional labor. They work very hard physically, but it's also caring for the patients, taking the little time to check in on them, seeing how are they doing. It's that short, caring touch that I, many of us may notice is slowly fading as the profession is moving to quickly just churn patients through for profit. So in terms of the board taking it over, we're going to stop.
Thank you, Marissa. Next, we'll go to Patrick.
I think the one thing that is most clear in this conversation is that the current structure and the current system is not working for nurses and frontline workers. They do not have a voice. They do not feel heard. And even as a public sector hospital, they don't even have the right to strike. And so for me, at the end of the day, I am a proud DFLer. And that L, meaning labor, means a lot to me. I'm going to stand with labor every step of the way. I'm going to stand with nurses. I'm going to stand with frontline workers. I don't pretend to have all the answers sitting here today. But what I can tell you is that something needs to change. That may mean direct representation for nurses on the board. It may mean more control going back to the county board. But I think what is really clear is that this doesn't work. And I want to be, I want to be clear as well about what we are talking about here, right? Nurses and frontline workers faced significant benefit cuts in the 2024 county budget, which was approved five to one by the county board. I would have voted no on that. For some folks, they're looking at thousands of dollars more in out-of-pocket costs, right? Especially after everything they did during COVID and all of the lifesaving work that they do for us every day. To me, it is unconscionable and immoral that they be on the chopping block when it comes to budgets. So that is where I stand. I stand with labor and I stand with nurses.
Thank you, Patrick, and over to Heather.
So HCMC is a safety net hospital. It is where you go when you have nowhere else to go. We cannot dissolve this board. We have to work to solve the issue that the nurses are bringing up. And I think it's an important one. We can discuss it without dissolving the board. There is state law that allows for dissolution of the board, and I don't think it's the right answer. Well, right now, as much as county commissioners are able to do a lot, we are not going to be able. Back in 2007, county commissioners decided to move away from that and move to an HHS board. Who gets turned away if we dissolve the board? I'm pretty sure it's not one of us in this room. So I would just caution when people say that. We need steady leadership. We need to be able, maybe adding a nurse to the board, revisiting some of the issues is the way to go, but it's certainly not dissolving the board.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we'll go to Jen Westmoreland.
So I'm the proud family member of multiple nurses. I have joined the Minnesota Nurses Association on the picket line. And I support our frontline workers and our healthcare providers. One thing that you learn really quickly working in local government is that it's all about nuance. And I spend a lot of my time engaging in the messy middle of governance. I spoke with a District Six community member who's a doctor at HCMC, and she expressed to me her concerns about ensuring that the community expertise that is currently on the Hennepin Healthcare Board is not lost. So while I absolutely support and the Hennepin Healthcare Board is not lost. So while I absolutely support increased oversight, and I think, you know, when we're talking about public dollars, the buck has to stop with publicly elected officials. So exercising increased oversight over the system in a way where we don't lose this community expertise that does exist on the board. And so I would be ready, day one, I've already been having a lot of these conversations, to get in there, to engage with the messy middle of this situation and find a solution that works for our labor partners and works so that we can continue to have a really highly functioning hospital system for community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and Janet Katoue.
Thank you for this question, whoever asked it. As you all are aware, District Six, we have had no representation at the commission, at the board. So when a very important issue such as dissolution starts getting to be discussed, and we do not have representation there, we are the ones missing out a lot. For my position is, this is an important issue. HHS was created in 2007. There has to have been something that led to that to be created. So all I'm asking is, in consideration of this, this issue, I hope and wish and pray that it will be put on hold until, if I am the lucky one, we can all have a full board to be able to take this into consideration. There is information that us outsiders do not have. Maybe the labor, the nurses' union may have that information. Maybe the HHS has that commission information, but we do not have a full picture to make an informed decision that has such a huge impact on the entire community. Those indigent patients who get to enter the door at Hennepin County deserve to be seen immediately. So dissolution, I don't think is the answer, but I don't have all the information to make a good decision. So this is a big decision, and we need representation before it can be rendered. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And Janet, we'll start with you with this next question. This was a very top topic of all the questions that came in, so we'll dig into this one just a little bit further. If we were going to put together some kind of leadership that would replace the board, what do you think that that would look like? And what kinds of systems or what kinds of working groups would be needed in order to make this transition predictable and make sure that patient safety is not disrupted and make sure that the patient care is, remains consistent and that it's a stable workplace for all employees at Hennepin County Medical Center? So two parts to that question. What would maybe a leadership team look like in replace that commission? And then how would you implement or how would you transition that leadership team? What would you need? Janet, do you want to give us a start on this question?
Yes. Yes, it is a very big question, and I actually have been asked by two people who really work there, and they are all doctors. One of them has worked in Hennepin County for 31 years. So she has both before HHS board was ever commissioned and when HHS has been. So given the magnitude of what this is and given the research and high-level seriousness or trauma that patients end up, who show up at that door means, I truly believe we need to hold this. And what leadership would look like for me, quite honestly, I do believe in community participating, and right now, the board is consisted of community who are part expert in that area. We have two commissioners who sit on there. So having two commissioners, we probably could add a third one if that may satisfy the board, but we do currently have commissioners there. And if all commissioners are showing up 100% in attendance to that, we should have visibility of what is happening. So if I get elected, I am still going to say, we do have representation there. And if you're going to be on HHS board, are you bringing back meaningful information that we as a commissioner can act on? So I don't have a clear picture. Like I already had said, I would need more information to be able to say which direction we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next, we'll go to Jen, Ms. Marland.
So this is a call to action. So the Hennepin County Board is planning on taking action on this before District Six is represented. That has been part of the conversation. So if you don't live in District Six, please reach out to your commissioner and say, hold on this vote until District Six is represented. Thank you. I will continue to advocate for that as well. We have the opportunity here to research national best models for how to do this in a responsible way. So oftentimes in local government, we get really into our own thing and think, okay, we need to come up with the way to do this. But there are models across the country for how to work responsibly with labor partners, with community experts, with elected officials to ensure accountability around public hospital systems. So I would advocate for engaging in that work. And then absolutely a task force where we're bringing experts in to help us figure out what this transition to a new model could look like. One of the main concerns that I've heard is just how this would impact daily operations in the hospital. So anything from something seemingly small is getting an expense approved to admitting patients. And of course, you know, if our nurses and frontline workers are not taken care of, that deeply impacts the quality of care that our most vulnerable community members are receiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We'll go over to Dan.
Like I iterated in the first part of the question about the board, I'm not ready to talk about transition yet because I don't think we're at the point where we need to transition away from the board. Moving to the idea of updating or thinking about different structures of or membership on the board, that's a conversation that I'm ready for. And I think the nurses, in their ability to advocate for themselves, for their patients, and I think all of the people within HCMC structures should have a voice at that table. I think, like we were talking about earlier, the opportunity to build a bigger table, whether it's by statute or whether it's by inviting people into audit meetings, making sure that folks know what's happening at the governing body of an institution that is so central to the functioning and the overall community health of Hennepin County is really important, and making sure that we have representation from all of the stakeholders, including labor, including the physicians at the hospital, including the administrators of the hospital, including and especially the county board, who sets the budget for the hospital, is really important. And so those are things that definitely should be under consideration. But I'd also, like Jen said, want to think about and lean into the best practices of where this is being done well and how voices from the stakeholders are being included in these conversations around the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We'll go to Marissa.
Thank you. So yesterday morning, I was at a 7:30 a.m. Rotary Club breakfast, and the speaker was someone who goes to Haiti. He's part of an organization who goes to Haiti and build wells. And what differentiates them from many other organizations is before they build a well, they ask the people there, do you want this? And they get community engagement and enrollment, and what that results in is long-term lasting implementation and change. And so I would be curious to hear what the people who are directly affected by the result of whoever would be making the decision, what they want. And in my mind, that would be the first place to start. I think with any organization, what's really critical is to put systems in place that operate smoothly. They did that in Haiti with the wells. So when the people who built them leave, they leave them the financial resources. They leave them with the education. So that it's like a small business. You don't have to directly input into it in a significant way every single time. You've created something of value, and you've handed it to the people who it benefits. So I believe some sort of oversight is really good, but I also believe in finding the balance of creating a system of value and also enrolling the people who it benefits.
Thank you. We'll go over to Patrick.
I think we are well past the point for transitioning to a new structure. Again, I don't know exactly what that structure looks like today, but what I do know is that that structure should be centered on voices from nurses and frontline workers. They're the people on the ground every day saving our lives. And I want to be clear that this isn't just an issue of supporting labor or supporting nurses. This is an issue of supporting all of us in District Six. HCMC is a trauma-one center, as I'm sure many of us know. If you get in a car accident or you get some kind of a life-threatening injury, there's a high chance you're going to HCMC. And I want to make sure we have enough nurses there, and I want to make sure that they're not overworked and that they're not underpaid and that we're getting the best of the best because that's what we all need when we from District Six go to HCMC. So for me, at the end of the day, I trust nurses. I trust nurses to help us figure out what the solution is to this problem. They're the ones on the ground every day. You know, we talk about trying to maintain patient safety, which is, of course, incredibly important, but we don't talk about the fact that that's already being threatened, right? We already don't have enough nurses because we're not offering, you know, competitive pay and benefits at HCMC. We already have nurses who feel unsafe in the hospital, who are assaulted, who are injured, right? So to me, we need, in our next county commissioner, in answering this question, some real moral leadership to say that we're going to stand with nurses and we're going to let them drive this conversation because they're the ones, at the end of the day, who should really be doing that.
Thank you, Patrick, and then Heather.
Well, I would, so if I'm elected, what I would do is I would move to delay this. And quite frankly, you know, so the statute says that it needs five of the seven commissioners, whether or not we're seated or not. So patient safety and patient care is at the forefront, and nurses do matter. I want to be very clear in this. I love nurses. My two sons, they were born at 24 weeks, and they, I couldn't have done it without nurses. They would not be alive today. They were born, literally, the nurses helped them. But that doesn't mean that we dissolve a county board. That is the critical trauma-one access care for our state, really. I mean, this is, they are providing services for our entire state. So we cannot just say, I agree with one group, and therefore I will do whatever you want. That's not what an elected official does, not at all. And I know this from six years of being at the Capitol. I'm working on a lot of, we're working on a lot of legislation to address some of the things that are happening because we do have a nurse shortage. And honestly, what I would move to do outside of delay this is hire a consultant. We would revisit the benefits of the nurses. We would look to add potentially a nurse. We do not have an HCMC nurse that is currently working in the hospital onto the county board so that there's more voice. I mean, I think that is really important. So we can resolve these issues without throwing the entire county board away, or excuse me, the hospital board away.
Thank you, Heather, and we'll start with you for this next question. We'll switch topics. We'll talk a little bit about the environment and pollution. And the two areas that we want to talk about with this next question is, what's your perspective on shutting down the Merck trash incinerator? And then what would you plan to do to address chloride pollution in Hennepin County? So there's two types of pollution that we receive questions on, and again, Merck and chloride pollution. So Heather, do you want to give us a start there?
Yes. Okay, so the HERC, the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center, yes, I am in favor of closing it, and I think it actually really is a big issue that we have to tackle as soon as possible. But like all things in public policy, we can't just say we're going to do it without a plan. So there is a lot of things in terms of looking at how we are going to close the HERC that we really need to pass on the state level. Producer responsibility. Right now, producers are able to produce things at the state. We have a bill, and right now, moving through the, and I think actually will become law this year. I'm excited about it. Because right now, producers are able to make whatever they want and just throw it away. It might not be recyclable. It might just contain, it might be something that it's going to go into a landfill or into HERC, and we're burning it. It cannot be recyclable. We allow for them to make it. Other states have passed laws. I think there's like 28 other states that have passed laws to address this issue. We need to regulate to make sure people are making products that we can recycle, we can compost, that are not creating a waste. I care about this. My sons, kids, young kids really care about the environment because they know this is going to be something we're leaving them with. So we deserve, they deserve better. We need to get on this. And so, yeah, I mean, ideally, I would, I really go with the goal I had met with the group as well. I would say the five years is a good goal, ideally sooner if we can, but it's 1,000 tons of trash every single day that's being burned. So would that happen in District Six? Do you know where there's an incinerator in District Six? There's not one. There's also not a landfill.
Thank you, Heather. Over to Patrick.
I'm also fully in favor of closing the HERC as quickly as possible. I think when you get down to kind of brass tacks, there's not a lot of reason to keep it open. We've heard about the incredibly negative health effects for the community living around the recovery center, which is a community that is primarily a community of color and a lower-income community. There is a reason that the HERC was built there, and it wasn't built here in Minnetonka. And that is a real problem, something we need to address as soon as possible. The HERC does not generate revenue either. It is actually a cost to the county. The county in 2022 spent $36 million operating the HERC, and will need to spend another $5 to $6 million a year in the future for capital improvements, right? So it's also not making us money. And it's clear, and there are plans already, to close the HERC as soon as possible. I would say two to three years, five to seven, certainly as a ceiling, but I would prefer two to three. Landfills in the region can handle the trash. Research has shown time and again that the emissions and the health effects from landfills are significantly less than the HERC. And I would say, you know, the HERC is part of our process towards reducing trash reduction, not a goal of it. So I would support shutting it as soon as we can and continuing on with a number of trash reduction programs as well.
Thank you, Patrick. Over to Janet.
Thank you. Environmental justice and climate justice is core to who I am and why I run. We all deserve to breathe clean air, no matter what our zip code is where we live. However, this is not the case for many neighbors in the North District in Hennepin County. I will continue my focus on environmental justice. I believe in a future where we don't bury or burn any trash. I believe a zero waste in our future, and I know that we can do it as long as we have the political will to do so. I would like to start identifying alternative funding streams for our environment and energy work that is currently funded exclusively through the revenue generated by the HERC. Burning garbage as well as landfilling garbage is not sustainable and does not promote environmental justice. We need to begin moving toward a zero-waste future now, especially as the county prepares to approve its solid waste master plan. I want to work with you to ensure community voice isn't left out because community voice was left out. That's how we ended with the HERC where it currently is. The cases of asthma in that zip code is extremely high. And if we are trying to trim our health and human services budget, those same residents are the ones who end up at HCMC, and we have to take care of that as taxpayers. We may be in Sixth District, but we are directly impacted by those costs. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, over to Dan.
Like I said in one of my earlier responses, I think the number one issue facing the newly-elected Hennepin Commissioner would be shutting down HERC. I think it needs to be done rapidly. I think it needs to be done responsibly, making sure that we have a place for all of that waste to go. And I think moving upstream in that value chain to think about waste reduction at a municipal level and at a county level, to incentivize people to compost, to incentivize producers to make recyclable or compostable materials in the components that they sell. We have Best Buy headquartered in Hennepin County. We have Target headquartered in Hennepin County. We have General Mills headquartered in Hennepin County. We can partner with these organizations to do better on behalf of not only Hennepin County, but the communities around the country who are suffering from this excess of plastic and other toxic waste. So I think there is definitely an opportunity for us to think about this at multiple levels. But like I said earlier, the number one opportunity that we have to help environmental justice and environmental accountability and responsibility in Hennepin County as a in Hennepin County as a commission is to shut down HERC as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Jan, or Dan, and then we'll go to Marissa.
Thank you. So there are two key components to the HERC. One of them is the environmental justice part. And HCMC takes care of a lot of people who suffer from respiratory issues. The other, the secondary issue that has not been talked about yet is the HERC currently owes $37.7 million in GO bonds. GO bonds are general obligation bonds that are due to be paid out at interest to their shareholders over the next 20 years. So we have, this is not the first time we've heard about environmental justice. It's not the first time we've heard about we are causing harm to people within a certain community. Decisions from the past have led us to a one financial problem and an environmental justice problem. So I had the opportunity to talk with Amy, Anna and Judy. They are heading up a project that could be a replacement for the HERC. And I asked them, where else has your, where else have you had proof of concept of what you are looking to do here in Minneapolis? And they shared that there have been other states, other cities who have done what they are looking to do to make Minnesota and especially that area, that community, a safer, cleaner place for the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go over to Jen.
Thank you. So the HERC was never designed to be a long-term solution to trash disposal and it has already outlived its lifespan. As Patrick mentioned, it's costing the county millions of dollars a year and it's not a fiscally responsible choice to keep this open. And there is a plan to shut it down quickly and responsibly. It's the People's HERC Transition Plan. It was developed by a national group, Zero Waste USA, under contract with the Minnesota Environmental Justice Table. And I encourage you and our county leaders to take a close look at this plan. It really builds upon the recommendations of Hennepin County's Zero Waste Plan that has already been put forward. And it shows that shutting down the HERC quickly is doable and that we can create a better zero waste system. This is going to really depend on close collaboration between the county and our city partners. So I know we have some of our city electeds in the space tonight. And we, as county leaders, absolutely need to support our cities in moving toward waste reduction and zero waste. One opportunity that I think we missed a bit, but we can make up time on it, is organics disposal. There is a lot of work being done around that at the state, the county, and we need to communicate that to our cities and our communities here in District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and we'll start with you with this next question. We'll switch topics now. The topic will be on affordable housing. What are your ideas for affordable housing? And then do you support Larry Kraft's new housing bill HF4009? Yes or no is okay on that second part of that question, if available?
Is that the missing middle bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So as I mentioned before, affordable housing is an area of passion for me. I see it as being crucial to safety within our community, stability. It's something that I've seen the impact of in terms of our Hopkins Schools families and our educators and employees throughout District Six who oftentimes can't afford to live in the community where they work. So I would be excited to continue my service on the Heading Home Hennepin Executive Committee to continue to expand affordable housing throughout District Six. I am supportive of the missing middle bill. I signed on to a letter of support through my work with Local Progress. Local Progress is a national organization committed to racial and economic justice and I'm part of our leadership team here in the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and we'll go over to Marissa.
Thank you. For me, home represents a safe, secure and stable place that you come to to recharge your energy and recover after you've been out taking on positive challenges and growing out in the world. I, my belief when it comes to home is in all of our policies and everything we decide, we need to spend wisely and find ways to do more with less. The approved 2024 Hennepin County Budget increased property taxes by six and a half percent over 2023. And because homes are purchased on a monthly payment, that affects affordability of a home. So the principal and interest are two parts of a monthly payment, but we also have taxes and insurance. And when taxes go up, it affects affordability. Insurance, also, I've seen my neighbors talking about their insurance rates going up. Why are insurance rates going up? There's increased crime. So all of these, all of the things are connected. And I believe a holistic approach to investing wisely, spending wisely, and making home a safe place where you can come to. I think it's critical that people have safe homes and it's a really important thing. As to the particular bill, that is something new to me that I, before I would talk about, I would have to research. But for me, home is a safe place where you come to after a long day and I believe people need a safe and secure home.
Thank you, Marissa. Dan.
To start with, yes, I would absolutely support the missing middle bill. I think it's an important step to making sure that we have affordable housing across the state. And subsequently, affordable housing is an issue not just here in Hennepin County, but across the region, across the country. And we're seeing this honestly across the world. We have experienced a period of disinvestment in our communities that only are building at either the luxury level or the, you know, the level that leaves so many people outside of the ability to afford comfortable, safe, you know, affordable homes in their communities. And that's something that we need to pay attention to at Hennepin County. There is opportunity for the county commission to make investments, both at a policy level and at a monetary level, to make sure that affordable housing is expanded across the county. And I think part of what Hennepin County exists as is sort of the connective tissue layer of government between municipal levels and state levels. And pushing all of those levels to be more focused on affordable housing is a really important part of what the commission can do and encourage things like the Minneapolis 2040 Plan. I was devastated when that was overturned by the judge. And I think more innovative opportunities for us to create creative solutions to the housing crisis, allowing people to age in place and stay in the communities that they've come to know and love is a really important next step for us as a community and a county and of course as a state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we'll go to Patrick.
So I'll start by saying, in its current form, no, I would not support the bill. I think that we need to find a better middle ground between local control, but also ensuring that we have enough affordable housing for folks in our community. For me, when I think about affordable housing, I think first and foremost about our seniors, especially folks on fixed incomes. So I want to focus on specifics. I would look at expanding the state's senior citizens' property tax deferral program to the county level. I want to look at unfair property tax assessments, which make it really hard for a lot of folks, especially seniors on fixed incomes, to stay in their homes. So I'd want to look at potentially extending our market value exclusions program for veterans to lower income seniors as well. I also want to make sure that we are prioritizing housing for folks and people in our neighborhoods struggling with addiction and mental illness. So looking at permitting processes to open more group homes and do it more quickly. And the last thing I want to say too here is, when it comes to affordable housing, I want to make sure that all county funded projects are staffed and run by union labor. I want to make sure that they have project labor agreements and that they have protections against contractors with histories of wage theft and labor abuse and labor trafficking. So for me, overall, that is really important as well, is making sure that when we're building more affordable housing, that we're doing it with union labor.
Thank you, Patrick. Over to Janet.
Thank you for this question. Affordable housing is at the heart and the core why I run. Home ownership, workforce housing, deeply affordable housing, ending homelessness. We need an all hands on deck approach to address this issue. This is a crisis and building more homes is urgent. We need to address root barriers that continue to prevent construction of the missing middle. And yes, I do support Larry Kraft on the missing middle legislation. We need to reduce barriers that are driving up the cost of building missing middle, eliminate exclusionary zoning practices that have exacerbated racial housing gaps, create new housing infrastructure fund to help cities address infrastructure needs as they build more homes. We have cities such as Edina that say, you can build your house, but you need to have three garages. Well, if I can only buy one car, why am I buying three, building three garages? It's a direct result of those kinds of requirements that put pressure on the other homes on the street and making it impossible for our teachers, for our support staff in schools, for even our city staff and police to be able to live in the community in which they serve. So I am a strong supporter of Larry Kraft legislation for building missing middle. Thank you.
Thank you, and Heather.
Thank you. We don't have a policy like that just for Edina. That would, that would be, that is, but you know what, actually the community does. And Janet is bringing up actually a point where there are communities in the state of Minnesota where they do require a three car garage. They might require several acres on your land. So the issue is real. We do need a housing and also we need a solution that's going to make sense. The missing middle, I don't, just to make, to level set, to make sure everybody knows what that is. The missing middle would allow for, the bill's been changed many times, but it would allow for uncommercial property, for you to buy, the developer to buy it by right, no approval of city council. So it really interacts with commerce a lot and they could essentially build housing there. They would still have to get permits, but it would only require one parking spot. And it would take out the public debate. So you wouldn't be able to go and have a debate about whether or not that it should be built at a certain location. And so I do not support that because I think that we, the public debate is really important. We value that in our, we might not always agree, but we want to come and we want to fight it out, right? But I would say a solution to that, and I've been talking about that at the Capitol, is instead of the missing middle, I first of all, want to just say that we need to make sure that we're building housing that can, people can invest in and create wealth from. It cannot just be apartments. We have to be honest with ourselves about that. I was somebody that was homeless when I was 16. I grew up housing unstable my entire life. We use Section 8 housing. We need to treat people with respect that are facing housing challenges. What I would say is cities need to have a limit in terms of affordable housing and then they need to meet that requirement across the state.
Thank you, Heather. We are starting to run out of time, but I did want to try to get in just a little bit more on a couple of different topics. So let's just try a couple of yes or no questions and then we'll go to closing remarks. So the, do you support an extension to the light, blue line light rail? And we'll start with Dan. Yes or no? Yes. And Heather?
I'm a politician, I can't answer it. Maybe, I need more details.
Marissa?
No.
Jen? Yes. And Patrick?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's try that one, that one worked great. One more, one more topic, if we could get it in. Hennepin County has a local options, has ranked choice voting in the local options bill. Do you support this, the local options bill? And we'll start with Patrick.
Yes.
And Jen?
Absolutely.
And over to Heather.
Yes.
And Marissa?
No.
And Janet?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
All right, that was wonderful. Thanks so much for, for your participation. We're right now, we're going to go to our closing remarks. And as I said, we're going to work backwards from our opening remarks. So the first person that we'll start with is Jen Westmoreland. Closing remarks, one minute, please.
Thank you so much. This has been such a pleasure to be in conversation with you this evening and really bring forward some of our shared priorities for District Six. This is a time, oh my. That was exciting. I'm going to take that as a really good sign.
Hold on just a second. You will restart the timer for her.
Okay, okay. Thank you. This is a time of great possibility for District Six as we navigate unprecedented developments in transportation, housing, accessibility for all community members, environmental action, community safety, economic development, election integrity, which includes the expansion of ranked choice voting, and the needs of young people, caregivers and seniors in our community. As a community leader here in District Six for decades, twice elected Hopkins School Board Member, career educator, queer woman, parent and daughter of fabulous seniors who live here in District Six and I want them to be able to thrive in place joyfully and in a way that's connected to their community. I am deeply dedicated to this work. It is core to who I am. So I invite you in to our campaign. Let's create the vibrant future our District Six community deserves. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. Marissa?
Thank you all for having me here tonight. With the light issue, I hope that wasn't my son who did that. What I see as part of the future is finding a win-win, an alignment of values and vision. Whoever takes the role of commissioner needs to have alignment with people in where are we going and what are the things that matter to us? One thing that I think we've seen is what got us to where we are won't necessarily take us where we're going. We need someone who is comfortable and confident in the face of what looks like an uncertain future. We need to begin rebuilding trust. This looks like our words and actions coming into alignment. There is absolutely no other way to rebuild trust than words and actions aligning. What matters to me in everything that we do is finding a win-win and extended.
Thank you. Thank you. Dan?
Thank you all for being here tonight. It was a privilege to spend some time with you all and get to share our vision about where we think Hennepin County can go. I want to use my closing remarks to talk about the values that I want to hold as your county commissioner and the policies that I want to pursue. So the values that I want to hold are values around pursuing innovation, pursuing equity, pursuing opportunity and being pragmatic about where we're going and how we're getting there. The things I want to pursue in a policy lens would be economic opportunity, climate investment, youth opportunity and public safety. And what I want to leave you with tonight is what I leave most of my conversations with community around is one of the sayings that we were brought up with as kids was, "The truest expression of generosity is planting trees under whose shade you'll never sit." And that's what I want my campaign to be about, my time in office about is planting trees and making sure that we are able to connect our work to the next generation and these investments pay dividends for years to come.
Thank you, Jan, and, or Dan, we'll go over to Janet.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us here. Thank you to my fellow candidates. I am here to say thank you so much. My campaign is a grassroots campaign. My vision for our society is where every boy, every senior citizen has the same chance to reach their full potential. I am fighting for public safety. I am fighting for environmental justice. I am fighting for healthcare, fighting for affordable housing. It's the pinnacle of my, my campaign. And we need grassroots politics. Not only the well-connected should be our leaders, those of us who are grassroots are equally talented and have something to give the benefits, all of us. We all do better when we all do better. Honors to our late Senator Paul Wellstone. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'd like to start again by thanking the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates and all of you watching. District Six has an important decision to make. We deserve a county commissioner who meets us where we are and fights for what's right.